This is covering, so I will be taking his place this evening. Could I please have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Wilkinson. Vice Mayor Mark?
Here.
Councilmember Kemenet.
Here.
Onto reports, reports and presentations. Do any members of the City Council have any reports or presentations? Seeing.
I would say that we had a wonderful open house a couple of nights ago, the housing element, and about fifty to sixty residents came and gave us their feedback. And it was actually very, very well run, and I thought we had a lot of good comments. And anyway, we decided to go about it.
Wonderful, thank you. City Manager's report, please.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Lynch, I think, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Mark, we should probably take public comment on this before moving on.
Okay, poll comment on the City Council's report? Seeing none here, Madam Clerk?
I see none.
Thank you. After the City Manager's report, please.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Mark. I do have a few comments and reminders for this, reminders for this. First, just to dovetail off what Councilmember Cooper just mentioned, we have a meeting last Thursday on the ninth, ninth, where the community workshop to walk, to walk residents through the revised element update, specifically the revision, the revisions to aim for certification in the spring. It was about a two-hour workshop, workshop, great turnout, the community center downstairs, downstairs was full. We're given the walkthrough of the updates and we're encouraged to ask questions and, and to plural and written feedback. Moving forward, the consultant diet in Batia will summarize those comments and will provide them to the, them to the planning to consider in the context of the next of the new draft. Staff's intent is to bring this item to the Planning Commission next week on the twenty-first. In time, a copy of the revised housing, housing element draft is available at City's website. I want to thank Councilmembers Peter, Peter Mark, Jane Cooper, Planning Commission, Commission Chair Pat Carepiet, and our very own Rebecca Markwick for the many, many hours they've spent on this critical, critical project. I also want to want to mention on another six, I want to point out that the first public hearing for Mallard Point will be held tomorrow evening in these chambers. This will be a special meeting of the Planning Commission, similar to this meeting setup, it will be a high format, allowing the public to join in person or remotely if that is their preference. The meeting will begin at six thirty P M. Rebecca's staff will have the community center downstairs open in the event this room reaches maximum capacity. I encourage every resident to attend, hear the discussion and to provide their own feedback. To, to view the staff report and documents related to this hearing, simply visit www.cityofbelvedere.org and click on the link in the banner at the top of the page. And then finally, you may have heard that winter storms are on the horizon. Wind and rain are expected to pelt Marin County for the next few days, few days. Public Works crews have spent the better of three months preparing for the winter. And I'd encourage residents to also be proactive around their own home, their own home, cleaning out their gutters and drains and placing sandbags where needed. We should all be prepared for the eventuality of a power outage, outage. Submit your emergency kit is up to date. Have a flashlight with a radio and video and, and of course, sign up for Alert Marin, Alert Marin to hear any emergencies. More information on these topics is available on the county's website, county's website. Emergency dot Marin County dot O R G. concludes my report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. And any council for the City Manager here? Could I ask one question if you can, following, following opposing element update you gave us? Do you know what the adoption schedule would be going forward?
Yeah, I can, I can brief, you know, I guess broad strokes.
Yeah, broad strokes.
Only we'd be going to the Planning Commission on the twenty-first to provide really that that the public was able to see on Thursday. They can see a summary of all the public comments that we really received, be able to review that draft in full and provide their own feedback on the official record. Once that's done, we'll have a process where we bring it back to staff, making the adjustments as requested, and then bring it back to the Planning Commission for another round, round of review. The second round will also include some potential zoning amendments to consider. And then finally, there's a, there's a resolution on the consent calendar tonight to adjust the public hearings, specifically the City Council meeting, public hearings that are going to be in January. Normally, we'd be meeting the second Monday of the month for our regular meeting. However, given the schedule for the housing element update and the zoning amendments, we're anticipating being needing to have, push that date out slightly to the twenty-second of January. There'll be a first and, first and second reading with the City Council for zoning amendments and the housing element adoption, adoption in January.
Thank you, thank you. Further questions for City Council?
I did just, I did just have to save the question I was going to ask in a few, ask in a few minutes. It's on the consent calendar, but I had a clarification question. Meetings in January, January at two six thirty.
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
No reason to.
Are there any public comments on the City, City Manager? Seeing none here, none here, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mark, I see none.
Thank you. We'll move now on to the swearing, the swearing in a police officer. Do I turn this over to you, Chifu? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Mark, Council, Councilmembers and Red Belvedere. I would like to take this opportunity to, to introduce this police officer, Erin Harold. Also want to acknowledge her many friends, close friends who are here tonight to help her be sworn in. Erin was born and raised in Plattsburgh, New York. In her youth, Erin was a highly competitive figure skater for thirteen years, attaining both the United States and Canadian gold test medals in ice dancing. After a multi-decade career in fundraising, investor relations and communications for several major private equity firms, Erin wanted to live into her community more and be of service. With that, she pursued a longtime interest in law enforcement and now comes to Belvedere after gaining post-academy experience patrolling the streets of Burlingame. Erin holds a Bachelor's of Art from the College of Holy, of the Holy Cross and Wirtschaft and Massachusetts. She also earned, also earned Ambassadorial Scholarship for Master's Studies in International Economic, Economies in Argentina before settling in ten years ago. Erin lived in five foreign countries, countries and in Spanish, French, Swedish. And with that, I'd like to ask Officer Harold, Officer Harold to come on in.
Do solemnly swear that I will, I will surrender then the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California against all enemies, or any one that I will bear truth, faith and to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
I understand.
That I take this obligation free without any mental preservation for purpose of litigation and that I will welcome paper discharge the duties of
Congratulations, Officer Harold. Welcome to the police force, we're thrilled, thrilled to have. Moving on to the consent calendar, consent calendars of items that the City Council considers to be routine or can't, or cancel, how discussed previously and do not require further discussion unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the City Council. The calendar will be adopted by one motion. Council will take public comment on all items on the consent calendar when the calendar is called. So would anybody like to discuss or pull any item from the, from the consent calendar?
I'd like to discuss four B.
Four B, B? Okay, ask a question and leave it in or discuss it and pull it out?
A question.
Okay. Noting that, any other discussion on items? Okay. So we would ask questions now or do we ask the, ask the public for?
Yeah, ask, ask some questions now, it's fine.
Okay, so.
And so I just had a clarification question, which is that in the description of the, the budget review, our pensions have moved significantly into the red according to CalPERS because of very, because of very poor turn. We have, we have a pensions policy that we set up a few years ago. And, and that's for reviews every three to five, three to five years. And it strikes me that it's probably a time to do that review, given the significant, significant deterioration. Wanted to check the Finance Committee, Finance Committee is meeting, say, for the audit. Do we need the City Council's permission to do and to do an all three to five year review now or is that, or is that something that gets to the finance committee level? Sorry to put you on the spot, on the spot.
I would believe that that would come from the Finance Committee recommendation.
Okay, so I would just say as one of the council, council members on that committee, I'll certainly be pushing for that because I think it is the right time to do, to do that. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public relating to the consent calendar? Madam Clerk, are there any online?
I see no raised.
Thank you, and I would entertain a motion for the entire four A through four F consent calendar.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar, all items under section four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, moving to the public hearing, item five A, considered a resolution ending the city's master schedule of fees, charges and application fees. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I know. Is this item, I'm, I'm, I was it? Oh, Helga, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Mark, Vice Mayor Mark and members of council, Helga Carter, Administrative Services Director. In your, in your evening is a resolution approving, approving changes to the master fee schedule for the Planning Department and General Administrations only. The city maintains and publishes your fee schedule that provides for various fees to be charged for local, local governments. The following amendments are ended for your consideration. Under the General Administratives, we are proposing to update the service, service charge fee to this, the credit card transaction fees to be up to two three point five percent plus thirty five cents change from two point eight percent. This will include the rate sheet charge transactions conducted on the new web, website platform, platform, which is three and a half percent plus the thirty five cents as well as the other credit card processing platforms used for city business that still charge two point percent. Secondly, under the planning section, we are proposing to update the staff billing rates to reflect the most current staff rates as of July first, twenty twenty-three that are part of the time and material fees. I do want to mention that the cost recovery for the Planning and Building Department as of June thirtieth was eighty cent. There is no significant fiscal impact to the city anticipated as a result of these changes to the fee schedule. The new fee schedule would take effect in sixty days or January twelfth of twenty twenty-four. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very much. Any questions relating to item five A?
No, I just want to mention how grateful I am that staff, that staff, the extra time and effort to implement, implement the cost program, the idea that we have closed a million dollar, million dollar in the Planning Department the past few years and are recovering at eighty percent is, is fantastic and it, it reflects, reflects the city's concern for our taxpayers that, that, that the applicants that, that use these services more, more than standard fee schedule would, would reclaim is, is really something, something that has helped the city. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I ask one additional question? I know our goal is ninety percent, and we're eighty, eighty percent. How do we close that gap?
Well, part of the reason was because we spent a bit more with the mid consultants. So over in last fiscal year due to the, not having a director of planning really part of the year, and so we relied, they relied on the mid consultants more than usual and.
And that can't be passed on to the, why can't that be passed on to the customer?
Well, it can, but then.
Saying it's not so closely billed hourly or something, so you can't correlate the two? Or what would be the reason you can't just apply it?
Yeah, well, we can apply it, but there were just more expenditures and then we.
Are we going to get closer to ninety percent in the coming year?
I'm hopeful that we go, so.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Helga.
Relating, relating to that ninety percent, I would actually make a suggestion, I remember talked to, to Rebecca about that. We allocate time based on projects and even if it's a consultant, if it's a consultant, they get their time as well. Elements like the, the project, for example, like the housing element, other problem, other project aren't attributable to a particular, to a particular client could also be as well. And if not, if not directly charged to that budget, that budget item recognized as a recovery, every, so that it's clear what that. So it would be nice to know next year that eighty percent was recovered and eight percent, eight percent was the housing element, for example.
Definitely.
That's valuable, I believe.
Definitely.
Thank you. Open up the public forum for, for this item. Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, any mind?
I see none.
Thank you. Can bring it back for comments or a, a motion?
I can make a motion to the master schedule of fees, charges and application fees.
Second, Kemenet, sir.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to other scheduled items, item six A, discussion and adoption of resolution, consolidating municipal election to vote on a measure adjusting the appropriations limit for the annual fire service tax.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark. Before you this evening are two resolutions for your consideration. The first is calling for a consolidated election to be held on March fifth, twenty twenty-four to vote on a measure which allows the city to continue adjusting the appropriations limit for the annual fire and emergency medical service tax. In nineteen eighty, Belvedere contracted with Tiburon Fire Protection District and Emergency Services, and at the same time voters passed a fire tax to pay, to pay services. The tax is, is collected through property tax bills and one hundred percent of the proceeds go seeds, go paying for fire and emergent, emergency services. For the city to continue spending these tax revenues, as it was state law requires the, scares the city to renew a measure every four years. There is known as the Belvedere Fire, Fire Measure. This does not increase the fire tax. This is a legacy, legacy requirement from the state of California, California, known as the limit, which places a limit on local government spending of tax proceeds. Spending above this can limit, limit must be approved a simple majority vote of the electorate every four years. This eleventh consecutive four-year renewal, renewal of the fire since nineteen eighty-four. The current fire measure will expire of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, or necessitating the renewal, which would extend the fire measure from July first of twenty-four to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. The second resolution concerns the setting of filing deadlines and other procedural elements for the upcoming election. There are no substantive changes that have been made to the resolution or the election process, which has been followed in previous elections. Included in the report are some essential attachments, including the proposed ballot measure language, a calendar with the relevant dates and deadlines, and deals of administrative procedures for the election. And that concludes my summary, and the City Manager, City Attorney and myself are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions relating to the annual, sorry, the every four-year Belvedere Fire Measure? Please.
The taxes is collected, collected.
Yes.
Yes.
Allowing us to use the tax. I just wanted, just wanted to clarify that this to do with the collection of the tax. That's an ongoing parcel tax.
Yes, I believe Ms. Carter can provide more detail, but I believe the, there's separate ordinances, that there's, that there's separate or separate, separate authorizations. And fire tax will be collected as it always has been with, with the, with the modest increase, modest increase is discussed in the, in the staff report. This, this just gives the city the ability to spend it for the next four years.
Right, the fire tax has no sunset.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Seeing, seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mark, I see none.
Thank you very much. Bring it back for discussion, discussion and motion? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for all that. Ms. Carter? Item six B is a condition of a revocable license for private improvements in the public right-of-way along Belvedere Avenue for the property at twenty-five Peninsula Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark and council members. For your consideration this evening as a, as a revoked application at twenty-five Peninsula, Peninsula Road improvements within the Peninsula Road right-of-way. On August second of the, of this year, the project interview approval for landscaping and hardscape improvements, some of which, some of which were in the Peninsula Road right-of-way. The public right-of-way improvements included bluestone pavers to replace, to replace a concrete walkway, three ficus and thirty-five gallon pots, one fruitless olive, olive tree in a one gallon pot, and grasses four feet tall. Councilmembers, for your consideration, the applicant can't to replace the morning light grasses circled here in green, fescue and succulents. The reason for this change is so that the new planting mature do not extend over the, the sidewalk and path of travel. Here's the, the morning light grasses that previously proposed and the, the blue fescue and succulents. A revocable license for private use of the public property may be granted at the discretion of council when there is some benefit public. Here, staff suggests the landscaping and pavers will enhance the aesthetic appeal of the property frontage without impeding public views or infringing on privacy. For those reasons, staff recommends that council approve the request for the revocable license at twenty-five Peninsula Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the planning staff? Any, any comment from the public relating to this item? Again, seeing none, seeing none?
See none.
Thank you. There was no applicant presenting this, obviously, right? Obviously, right? No. That's not the way to do that.
The applicant is here if you'd like, if you have any question.
Just if there are questions, but I don't, not necessarily do it to, to present. Bring it back to council for deliberation, comment or, or if, if none?
I just wanted, just wanted to make one. And that is that I was really happy to see that the homeowner and landscape architect willing to change the plantings because I'm, I'm hoping as we go forward, forward with landscape on when it's being replaced in, in, in a river area that we try to make sure that it, that it doesn't grow the sidewalk. All of us that walk around realize that we're doing, doing this all time around so many plants that, that I think this would be a great way to start moving forward from now on and just make sure we don't have plants growing up really close to the sidewalks, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I share Councilmember Cooper's comment, and I think this is a very appropriate request of use of public land whereby it enhances the landscaping in a way that's really sustainable in that area. I did a site visit and I think that the change, it does pull it back appropriately. And I can support this project.
Wonderful. You make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to adopt the revocable license for private improvements on the public right, on the public right of, so, so, twenty-five Peninsula Road.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously? Thank you. Item six C, consideration for revocable license at one thirty-five Belvedere Avenue.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor Mark and, and council members. For your consideration this evening is an application at one thirty-five Belvedere, five Belvedere for private improvements in the right, in the right-of-way. This being continued from the September City Council meeting. Day sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, the Planning, the Planning Commission approved review and associated entitlements to construct a new home at one thirty-five thirty-five Belvedere. The shaded area depicts, depicts improvements of Belvedere Avenue right-of-way and include five water guns at twenty feet tall, coffee berry, three feet tall, a new concrete driveway, driveway apron, a new stone, stone curb, and a new four-foot tall stone wall to screen, to screen recycle, recycling receptacles. At the September City Council meeting, council members had, had questions during the stone wall's location and whether it was necessary to be placed on public land. In response to council member comments, the, the architect provided supplemental diagrams to show alternative locations for the stone wall. Here, the elevations show the stone wall within the Belvedere Avenue right-of-way as well as on private property. Having the stone wall on public land would require an approximate seven foot, ten inch tall retaining wall, and having the stone wall on private property would require an approximate thirteen foot, six inch tall retaining wall. The variation in the retaining wall heights is due to the topography of the site, which slopes sixty-two percent down from Belvedere Avenue. Here's a rendering, it's a rendering of the wall on Belvedere Avenue right-of-way, Avenue right-of-way. Also for council's consideration in two thousand, two thousand, when this project first came, came before the plan, commissioner suggested that the applicant revise the project design to, design to minimal fill and net off-haul. The architect and the project and reduce net off-haul from thirty-three hundred cubic, cubic, forty-five cubic yards of escalator. By placing the stone wall in the right-of-way, the architect, this tech, this proper reduce overall earthwork and, and ground disturbance on. Staff suggests that the improvements would enhance the aesthetic appeal, appeal, property frontage and provide safer, safer pedestrian access and rec. and recommends council approve the revocable licenses proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you mind going back to Exhibit B? Yeah, just real quick question. If they were to do the area highlighted in red, they would still need to fill the area highlighted in green. So it's no savings there. It's 100% additional, correct?
It appears that way.
Thank you. Any questions for planning?
I have a question. So I'm looking at the I'm not sure what the mentor discussing this, but I'm not concerned so much about the trash enclosure specifically. But looking at the extent to which the property would go out into the public right-of-way, does it narrow the road to the extent that you can't get? Because I walked by today, and by that property, the road is pretty narrow. Is it going to at any part narrow the road to the extent that two cars can't easily go? I'm just aware that in addition to this very solid brick wall that goes down, you've got juts out into the road as well. Many streets, it's hard enough to get by already, and Belvedere Avenue is a narrow, is a narrow. I was curious whether that had been examined.
It was examined by our Public Works Department, and the curb, I believe, is in the same location as what the fence, the current fence is.
Oh, it's about that far?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, good. Okay.
Yes, I also for staff or the applicant. I wanted to look at L1.11 that shows the nation of the trash enclosure and the elevation that's not a labeled drawing, but is a depiction of the trash enclosure at the road. Perhaps a question for the applicant, but I'm wondering whether it's all a trash enclosure. It looks like it's a trash enclosure enclosing possibly staircase or something else. So not just a trash enclosure in the public right-of-way, it's about twice the size of a trash enclosure. I'm wondering, is that about 12 feet or so, which is quite a bit bigger than a normal trash enclosure, and I just want some clarification on that.
Kurt, if you'd like to clarify, but my understanding is there's a stone wall that screens the enclosure. It's not actual, it's just a screen wall. And then that would lead down to the house. But Kurt, if you'd like to.
Yes, that's my first question, and as long as we have you, my second is I wanted to know whether there was any consideration of putting it at any our last meeting, of putting the enclosure at any other spot along the street just about 100 or longer, rather than just whether it be pushed back at its current proposed location. Thank you. I have two questions.
Kurt, can you press the mic?
Thank you. Can you go to Exhibit A? So I'm sorry. Let me ask or answer a question too first, which is, did we contemplate putting this trash enclosure somewhere else? You can see that and this may be difficult to tell from this particular plan, but we've got the garage and the new residence down slope, and you see that's a series of stairs there. So the client will be gathering their garbage there right behind, in garbage containers, right behind the garage. And when it comes time to pick up garbage and recycle, we'll be walking bits of trash and recyclables up those. So the logical place, very logical place for this enclosure is where we put it. Question further, we really didn't contemplate any place. Think the photograph that you started with, that particular north corner is pretty dense with which is this anchor for that very minimal structure. So that was the best place for it. One of the earlier ones was about, will this obstruct cars? Pathway of cars going back and forth, back and forth. I just wanted to note here that you can see that there is an there that says existing part to remain. There are approximately four existing spaces in that. And every time I've ever been to that, excuse me, that site, cars are parked there. So you can see our enclosure is recessed from that area. So if anything is blocking that street, it's really the parked cars there and not our proposed structure. There was another question. I missed your first one.
I understand the desire to have an enclosed, to have a trash enclosure. I can't think of another example in Belvedere of a trash enclosure extended by what looks like twice, twice length of streetscape. This unmarked drawing.
So I think what you're addressing is, so you can see, Sammy, do you mind going back to the which is Exhibit B? Getting up to the street level is a prick. And part of the reason we're proposing putting stair within that right-of-way is just to get that site. There was an earlier comment to, I would address as well to Sammy regarding so you can see that that shaded area there, that would require, well, first of all, retaining wall there, if we were to build it in board of the property line, would require a massive retaining wall and a lot of fill all the way along there. So to Sammy's point, one of the things we were trying to do is really minimize the amount of fill, and by putting it into the right-of-way, you can see that just the gray areas is significantly less filled. So I wanted to make that point clear. I wasn't quite understanding the conversation you guys were having. I guess I'm not exactly sure where you're saying that you feel like the enclosure is too big?
My question is just, first was for clarification. So we're looking at the private use of public land.
Yes.
And we've asked for a showing of necessity. And I very much appreciate your efforts in that regard. Part of necessity is does the applicant need, is it necessary to have the stone wall on public space at all? And I think you have addressed that. The second, though, since it is private use of public land, is do you need much? So we have an ordinance that does some guidance about trash enclosures. That's usually just what's needed for three tracks. And this picture looked at least twice as big as that. That's what I'm really getting at.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Again, it's the enclosed public land for private use.
Yes. So we have a few things going on. We had two recyclable containers, and we had two garbage containers fit in there, and we also have the gas meter in there as well. So we did on the architecturals lay that out. I see in this diagram we didn't. I'm going to page through here really quickly to see if I can find that drawing that shows that layout.
So just for clarification, now within this stone wall, we have four trash bins, some staircases, and a gas, a gas what?
Meter.
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 Okay, and is that above grade gas meter?
That's right.
Okay, but no, not, it's just the meter. It's not.
Correct.
Okay, so we have four trash cans.
That's right.
A stair landing and a gas meter?
Correct.
How long is that on the city streetscape?
What is the dimension of that? Length?
If you would, please.
I'm not sure we have it dimensioned, but I can give you a rough estimate.
Reason I'm asking is that I just don't remember something quite like that before.
It's roughly 15 to 18 feet from my diagram.
Okay, thank you. Just clarification. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I, also, Sammy, do you mind if you could go back to Exhibit C?
Before you do, can I ask a question on that right there?
Sure.
Everywhere else on the site, there's a secure perimeter. Where would the secure perimeter be inside?
I'm not sure what you mean by secure.
Is there, or the question is, is there a perimeter? Is there any lockable door? I mean, someone could walk down those stairs, get to someone's, get to this homeowner's door.
Yeah, well, I mean, yes. I mean, if someone were to walk down those stairs, all of those doors to the house and to the garage are locked.
Okay. I think what Council Commissioner was getting at is that those stairs that are inside the enclosure,
Yes.
you're closing in space for access to the house. Where the question for us, I believe, is why are you closing in that staircase? No one's begrudging you the use of the revocable license space to get down to your property, but does it need to be, you know, basically privatizing public space for that? I understand hygiene aesthetic aspect of hiding the garbage cans and putting that behind an unlockable 4-foot-high door.
Sure.
I don't see that same thing for the stairs, especially as you don't have a security.
Partly, it's just getting up that steep, steep slope. I mean, we, well, there's two things here. First was this revocable license first granted, I believe in 2005, this exact revocable license was granted in 2005, and then again in 2019. So the way we proceeded in design is that we knew that this had been approved before for the very good reason that it's such a steep site and getting garbage to the street for garbage trucks, recyclable trucks was difficult, to say the least. The set issue here, when we looked at reapplying, if you will, is configuring those stairs in such a way that we could get up to the street. And you can see all of this, I mean, there are a lot of stairs here, and we were switching back and forth, and we couldn't get up to the stairs without compromising getting into that space. So it was twofold. We really thought that this wasn't conversational because we got approval in 2019 for exactly this. So that's an important thing to state here. But it's just hard getting up that hill. And the minute you push it into the property, per our diagram, the amount of work, street work, retaining wall, footings, amount of fill to accommodate some sort of garbage enclosure is it's crazy. It's really tough. You can see on this diagram, this is a problem. Partly, do you see where the corner of the building is, the garage building? And you can see that also in the side-down slope. So the minute you start pushing everything towards the, you just run out of room stairs. You're right next to the building, and you to mention, and I don't know if you can see that on the you have to have portion if it's going to meet the street, right? If a garbage truck is going by, they want to grab those recyclable bins, if you will. The amount of flat space that you're now creating, and that wall pushes to the west, it really starts to be a barrier of the view as you're going to street, which I know the city council did not like at all. So I'm not city council, rather, the planners, because you're now blocking the view. And one of the revisions on our Exhibit 1, which showed the trees, one of the planners actually had us move, take off one of the gum trees because there was a fear that we would be impacting views going down the street. So the minute you start pushing that structure towards the water, you now start to obstruct views. Also another reason. That's, you can see that better, which is Exhibit Can you go to Exhibit B? There. There we go. Sammy, thank you. So you see that the push version with the retaining wall height at 18 feet plus, almost 14 feet. That edge gets pushed to there. So if you're walking on Belvedere Avenue, those are four walls there right off Belvedere Avenue. So an average person is 6 foot tall. You can see how pushing that out starts to drop. This diagram is really good, too, because you can see now with the amount of space that we have left on that hillside, getting stairs up to that almost seems impossible. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't think we're, at least, Commissioner, Councilor, Commissioner myself, I mentioned Commissioner because we're putting on our different hats tonight. But I think we're thinking that we understand completely why there's value and why it's inherently better for the project to leave, or at least I do, leave the garbage enclosures from the gate to the west in the revocable license area because of all the things you mentioned. Both the stairs would have, if it's pushed back, the additional fill is working against a lot of the design, a lot of the intent of our fill limitation requirements there. It's the, it's the, it's the street and taking, you know, walking down 7 to that next level in an enclosure in the way. I mean, I know there's drainage issues and there's some landscaping issues that would need to be solved, but I would almost rather prefer not have that wall extend from the gate end of it on the north side of that enclosure. That seems to be the definition of privatizing that use, because it's providing access, which would be beneficial to do it there, as you're not having to push further fill down into the site. I understand that. But I'm just wondering, would it need to have the wall there, or could it be a curb, or could it be? Or could it be some other landscaping that is, is, is less of a long, as you pointed out, 18 or 20 foot long hardscape on that road?
I mean, you know, it's an interesting question. I, again, I, I feel like there's a historical precedent for Belvedere Avenue, these, these, these low height stone walls. And I actually feel like that, that low height wall that you can see over is actually kind of a romantic, beautiful thing. Instead of having the short stubby little enclosure. I think vines are going to go over and I think it's going to be very romantic looking. And also think that just all those questions that you raise are really good ones about drainage and footings and, and it's, you know, you know, just stairs up off of that slope is really difficult. You know, we're looking at this too with landscape, with the landscape's eyes and our civil engineer eyes. And it, this was the design, the design that we felt best accommodated a lot of different.
Is the, is the dimensions of the road enough there where you couldn't continue that curb in front of the wall, to have the wall, to have landscaping in front of the wall? I mean, that picture right here, it elbows back into the curb.
It does elbow back into the, again, this, again, this is for our civil, civil engineer and for that for drainage.
Well, you mentioned vines, I don't see how vines would grow unless there's some, unless there's some plant.
Side on the south side and the north will be growing over that potentially.
I've occupied a lot of questions, any other questions?
No, but I, I agree with the concerns that have been raised. My issue comes around, as you said, there's parking spaces on that road, which are nearly always have cars parked there. And this is a very long, solid wall. When people are trying to back up to make way for people to pass by, and that's when accidents happen and that people get frustrated. And so to me, if there's a way.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So as you've said, there are parking spaces on the road on Belvedere Avenue next to this property, which you said yourself often have cars parked in them. And so you have to in that environment have people backing up to let people go by when you've got two cars running in either direction. And.
Currently.
But on the, those parking spaces are being maintained, correct?
Those, those are existing parking.
I know, exactly. But what I'm saying is at the moment, when people want to back up, they're backing up into, into soil effectively. And instead of that, they're going to be backing up toward a solid wall.
No, can, can you put, can you put on exhibit A?
Is it on my, because that doesn't seem to be clear, it seems to be clear.
I believe, I believe the fence, the current fence line is in the same location, same location curb is at the, the most portion of the shaded area.
That is correct.
So, so.
So, so the thing is up and beyond that. You can see in the diagram, right next to Belvedere Avenue, the note above that, that says parking to remain. So that is a series of three to four car parking in there, in there. That's right. The, the trash enclosure is to the west of that, that down slope. So you can, you can see that dash line there. That's, that's, that is.
Fire department.
As for.
Fire parking.
Fire truck, yeah, correct.
I understand that, but where you see where it says pavement at the, on this picture, the north side of the shaded area.
Just pavement.
So the, so if you, on the drawing.
Right where the cursor is.
Right, right where the cursor, that line there is going to be a solid curb, correct?
That is correct.
And right now, right, and right now, and that will, as you go along, it will reach toward the trash enclosure, which will be a solid wall on that line.
A bit, a bit back, but yes.
Set back a little bit.
So, that's right.
Right, but it's nowhere near as set back as the current fence. The current fence is much further back than that. Much further back. Well, if you look at the picture that you have.
Let me get my picture here.
So I don't know what number page it is in the page, it is in the page of how the site looks currently, currently. And I do not believe it's correct when somebody said that it's not, it's not correct.
I have a photograph here.
If you look at C10, 0, C1 dot 0, the fence is to be, you know, three to, two and a half to three feet beyond, beyond, behind of the, or downward in the plan from the curb line, curb line. That, that, yes, that one. Right? And I believe your curb is going, going on the outward edge of pavement.
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
So, so it will appear in this, in this plan, granted it's landscaping, but what, what is a soft curve, soft transition between the pavement and, you know, debris before, before the fence.
Yes, that's right.
To be frank about it.
Yes.
Will be replaced with a stone curb and more, probably a wider stretch than that before it gets to the improvements, that's landscapes.
Correct.
Yeah.
We just set back a tiny bit, but they'll set back nowhere near as much as the soft sort of soils are now. And so again, my concern there is you're maintaining the parking and you've got this curb and then a long, solid wall. And that's going to make extremely hard for people to maneuver around that site without hitting into a wall.
So I don't, I don't understand your point because your curb will.
No, no, it makes, it makes sense, although, although the rectangle that you designate for the existing parking is in the, is in this. So, so assuming there are four cars parked there today or four cars parked there in four years.
Yes.
There will, there will still be 12 foot, one inch of clearance beyond the cars and the edge of pavement above of a crossbelt. It will be the same, correct? That's how I read it. Because it, if you look at this drawing, this drawing here, that box here.
Are you, are you referring to the?
It's on the screen right here. If you start with that, if you start with that, there's, there's a box that, where the existing parking is.
Yes.
Right, right there, right there.
That's, that's right.
That appears to me to be the same box on your exhibit A.
That is correct.
So, so it would, if your measurements are correct, that the 12 inch clearance on exhibit A, keep going, right, right there.
Yes.
That same clearance above, above parking, parking would be the same when this and this is complete as it is now.
That is correct.
I appreciate that, but I would like a little bit more.
Down below.
Right, before we get to the wall, before we get to the wall, talking about the parking that Councilmember Wilkins was referring to. And I think the reason we're so concerned is that that really is a narrow right there. I think we can all agree on that. We have seen on Belvedere Avenue before where cars were able to park in standard parking spaces because there was a little bit of soft shoulder. And as soon as someone put a curb on one edge of existing parking spaces, they became just a little, a little bit too narrow to park. As a practical matter, cars would park there, park there, the road was no longer wide, wide enough for. And so that's why we're being so picky here as a matter of public safety, safety. So the narrow question is, I'm discussing for existing, existing parking space. I think the narrow question is, are you guaranteeing that when a curb is put there, those four existing parking spaces will be standard parkings, as not substandard parking spaces?
Absolutely. And that will be shown as a part of our building permit process, right? So right now, we're in a planning process, revocable license process, some of our, our dimensions. But there'll be dimensions absolutely, to ensure that I believe the minimum width is nine feet. So.
Those aren't shown as nine feet.
No, they're not. But again, this isn't a dimension plan either. So that, that would be a part of building, building department submission.
The revocable license that we vote on tonight
Yes.
is based upon plans that are attached to that revocable license. Are you saying they're not?
No, 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 they are. That's the intention. I guess I'm, all I'm saying is that clarifying information will be, information will be in the next round of required drawings.
That's, that's.
It would be all the be dimensioned, where do they exactly fall? We've got the gum tree, gum tree shown now for the landscape architects' plans, but those have not been dimensioned. They will fall in this, in that, in that degree as you see. But is it three inches one way, four inches, four inches another? The chin, what was approved by planning is exactly what we're looking at. And that's, and that's what.
Yeah, so just a point of clarification, the revocable license exhibit, exhibits never dimensioned plans. But they are attached to the planning commission set of plans are dimensioned. So I think we're, we're saying the same thing.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
We sort of prematurely opened up a like forum. So I, I, does the applicant want to make a presentation or was that your presentation?
The applicant does it, no, I, no, no, no.
Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none here, no, Madam Clerk?
I see, I see no hands raised.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to Council for deliberations and thoughts. Councilor Kim, sir?
First, I want to thank the applicant for coming back to us the evening. And also for all the work you've done on this fabulous project. And I want to welcome the applicant to community. I think this is, it's a very unusual project for this community because of the three lot merger. And it's in that context, the context of that benefit, right, that, that I am looking at the request, the request revocable license. So in granting the lot merger, that effectively granted, granted extraordinarily long street, we are, I am, I'll speak for myself, absolutely thrilled, thrilled that dilapidated, fans, electric property is going to be remediated in this, in this way, way. So my teak here is really quite narrow. When we considered this a month ago or two months ago, I guess it was, I was hoping that another location, the trash enclosures would be found that would, that would not go noticeable from city property. And possibly would be embedded within other existing retaining wall structure. But I think tonight you've really convinced me that that the north side of the property is, is, is the appropriate place for the trash enclosure. Certainly for the benefit of the applicant and the residents of the property and efficient handling of, of the garbage. I do however, think that at least in my mind, I would approve the minimum, minimum trash enclosure that would serve the purposes, purposes of, of the property. In my mind, the stair, the top of the stairs, top of the stairs to be enclosed. So, so I would, I would approve, I could only approve a trash enclosure in that location that, that only enclosed. I just want to briefly address what might be a misconception about something that is previously approved. Obviously, we all, we all, we all know that planning commission for whom we have great respect has, has done such a deep dive on this particular project and, and projects in general. But, but the design does, does not affect approval of the location, a particular design in public space. Those are two completely different questions. And I think there's a misunderstanding sometimes that once, once planning has approved something, then it's, it's a done deal. The second thing is there seems to be a misconception about the word revocable. And a revocable license may have been approved before. The nature of what we're doing tonight is, again, a revocable license is one reason we take such a hard look at things like stone walls, which are harder to revoke. So, so I think these are really important, important for us all to consider. But I would approve the, approve the request for revocable license, the license before us, but at a greatly reduced size, the enclosed use of. But I'm also, I'm also open to whatever council, council members say, this is, all minds can differ, so.
Not having a planning background at all. I guess I'm fine with it the way it is. It's, it seems it is back with, with same area that's getting planted. The curb, assuming that's not, that's, that's not part of the revocable. So the curb is part of the normal design and this is behind the curb. It seems to me that.
The curb is part of the license area.
Oh, it is part of the license, oh, okay.
The outward edge along Belvedere Avenue is.
So this whole thing is the revocable.
The whole shaded area.
Oh, okay, I'm the wrong person to ask, right? I didn't realize that until right now. Nobody asked about the curb, so I thought the curb was, was not part of it.
Let's finish some, some, some comments and then we'll, we'll consolidate a few questions.
So I lean the same way as Nancy here. I, I worry generally about overreach in terms of use of public land for private, for private. And I think anything that isn't absolutely necessary shouldn't be granted. And this does feel a little bit like a bit, a bit of beyond the necessary requirements. And so I would tend to agree with Nancy that we can approve, prove something that is smaller and, and serves only the purposes that are absolutely necessary.
Yeah, I would, I can certainly come back to you and send back to you in a sec.
No, that's okay. It's not time task anymore, so it's too late.
No, but we, we, there seems to be a, so we can open that up again in a moment, moment. I would, I would, all three of the council members who, or two of the council members who have been particular about their point, about their points, whenever possible, especially on a narrow, try to add as much width as we possibly, possibly can. We're reviewing that tonight, but the, but the curb, curb does in fact take more than what is currently a passable space today. As, as Todd pointed out, it does widen the parking, it does, does widen ratios, it does widen. widen space as you pass cars in a narrow area, and this would formally prevent that from happening. I'm concerned about, but, but, but I would, I would, I would be okay with that because of the fact that it has been that way, and the, it does align with the current improvements on the, on the, in the revocable license area. And now, we can open up to the public comment period again. Is there a solution you can think of if we were to condition this approval on not enclosing the staircase downward? And perhaps putting a gate at the bottom of the stairs? That would, you know, perhaps prevent, I mean, have a little more security going down the stairs, but, but having perhaps an extension of the curb that's on the, on the right-hand side in plan, in plan, left-hand side in plan with a little landscaping in front, keeping in front of the staircase, as, would that be an option?
Okay, so two, two things here, things here. The first, I just want to address the, the curb. The, the, the curb honestly is, is a, is a beneficinity because of, of rainwater runoff. There's a, there's a, is a very steep site, and particular site, if you read the geotechnical report, is, is a site that's very prone to slip, a slippage. And the, the addition of, of this curb is a way of controlling water, water runoff to drains. So, we potentially could, could push that board a little bit, but you, the, the intention, again, is to be at the edge of where the existing parking is. Just, just, just clear about that. That, the, the curb isn't a.
No, we like the curb.
Okay, good.
We like the curb.
Great, I just wanted to make, okay, okay, good.
I think it would, it would be, it would be further inward into the property.
Understood. Just to maintain the, the appropriate width for car parking.
Yes.
Absolutely. Your second question about the, the length of this particular structure, I believe we could take off two to three feet from the right-hand side, which is sort of the, the south side, if you will. The stair portion, those stairs that are within that structure, we need, we need, we need to create a retaining wall there to hold those stairs, those stairs, right? I mean, I mean, that, that's just not a aesthetic choi, choice. That is a structural choice to be able to accommodate, allowing those stairs to, to cut into that slope, slope, so we can march. So, I would say if we're going to decrease the length at all, it would be, it would be to the side, which is, which is where.
Yeah, would you need a four-foot wall above grade to, to stabilize, stabilize down?
Those stairs are below.
No, I understand that, but your wall is four feet above grade.
Well, you, from, from the street, you've got to protect somebody from falling over, right?
Yeah.
So, that's the reason, the reason it's four foot high from the street side.
So, if the stairs are there, you're right, you're right, you would need some retaining wall or, or guardrail of some sort.
No, retaining, you're, you're cutting in slope there.
No, but the retaining wall is downward.
Yeah, yeah, it's going down into, but it's got to hold the stairs. It couldn't, it couldn't be held by a railing example, I guess.
No, but the railing, the railing is above ground.
That's true. I mean, we could redesign this to be a railing, ver, rather than stone, a stone wall. We just, we actually thought you'd prefer a stone wall. There's a lot of precedent along Belvedere Avenue for beautiful stone walls. So, if you want us to change material, I, I think that's possible. It also works really nicely with the house. That's the vocabulary of the, the entrance gate, which is further down. It's the vocabulary of the retaining walls on the site. So, we're just matching the, the, of what was approved. But the, the, let me go back just a little bit about can we shorten that, shorten that answer is yes. I would say to the south side, two to three feet would be very doable, doable. So, knock off three, so that door there that we're showing, the little gate, the little gate, that's approximately three foot, foot. So, we would knock to the south, three foot off of that, and we could still get our, we'll get our four garbage containers in that we're showing, we're showing, I believe, whatever number it was, five right now. We could get four, get four in.
And the gas meter, this meter would still remain.
That's right, the gas meter would still be there, just push in with it, with it.
Why have you made it as, as long as that's not necessary to incorporate all of the elements?
Client asking for five containers?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sure it'd be agreeable to four. Part of, part of this, too, I, and I, this is to address your earlier comment about revocable licenses as in the jail. Actually, thought we were being uncontroversial by literally, I brought the old, the old plans here, approved in 2019, we are completely matching what was asked for before. Those plans that were the revocable license in 2019 that were granted to the previous project, we literally matched, thinking that that's, this had been litigated before, that's what you would have wanted. So, part of our intention was that, but we're, we're flexible here, too.
It's just, the issue for me is in Belvedere, that the touch points where crashes always happen are where it's a narrow road with a stone wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or you see those, those, those touch, those touch point.
Yeah.
We're just creating another one.
But again, I would go to this diagram, this diagram is in board of the existing parking.
When people are trying to back up, there's a big stone wall there when they're navigating around the.
You can't back up, can't back up there, it's too, if somebody tried to back up there now.
No, it's, it's just, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not into it, it's just, it's, if there's, if there's, if there's a soft scape, even end, and soft scape, there's some, there's some give or, it's not a hard, hard stone wall. Well, the curb is there, yeah, yeah. Actually, this gives, this provides more depth of, of streets than the curb. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I mean, I certainly appreciate the, the fact there is getting up from the kitchen level of, of the house is probably thirty-five or four steps, of which they're putting about of them, maybe seven or eight in the revocable license area, and another two or three immediately on a turnaround, which, which makes that more efficient. If, if you were to get the staircase out of the revocable license area, it puts more of a burden on switchbacking in the property itself, which would create the very fill that we're trying to not do. So, there's a value in putting that, those ten steps or so in the first switchback at the top of the street. And I do appreciate the architect's description of the fact that you have to protect that both from construction, from construction, so people above it, so there has to be some barrier up top, one way or the other, whether it's a, or in this case, the stone wall, which is a wall, which is, as you just picture of the, in the language of the house.
A question for, we don't have our building official here, but I'll bet planning knows. What is the dimension of a trash enclosure? What is the dimension, dimension of a trash enclosure?
I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that. I know where I live, where I live, you can order different sizes.
We're looking, we're here at the question of necessity under our code, and, and so I'm trying to figure out what, what the necessary length of a trash enclosure would be. They're posing fifteen to eighteen feet. Is a trash enclosure ten feet, eight feet, six? Again, our, our quest, the question before us tonight is necessity, so. Where's Brian? We need him.
Yeah, I would say three by three in plan, would be my guess.
Okay.
And then, so that's, that's twelve plus, you know, an additional, but between them, you know, twelve plus three, fifteen at a minimum is what you need, let alone, so twelve plus four probably on either side, five maybe.
Well, the question is, what dimension is on the elevation, this, this sketch that precedes L one dash zero, zero, zero in our packet?
Exhibit C there, the, the rendering?
Yes, the rendering in exhibit C. Is that the first page of exhibit C? Yes, yes, I'm sorry, it is of exhibit C. What the length of that is up to the door? Tendency would be to approve, approve the trash enclosure up to the gate.
And not, not beyond it to the, to the right, in that case, in that case?
And not beyond it to the right.
Which would mean they would need some.
Like a railing, yes, yes. And because what we have done with other, other people is, we're very, if it's an apron or, or, or a house, or, or the, or the bluestone pathway that's approved, it's, it's street level, level of, the railing would be a matter of necessity, but it's open and a minimum burden on the city. So, bearing in mind, that this is, bearing in mind, to Councilmember Cooper's question earlier, this is a revocable license that is frankly enormous, goes along the entire length of that property. Again, the city benefits a lot from those improvements with the normal benefit of landscaping and, and drainage and that kind of thing. But a stone wall in, in public space is something that we have looked very, very carefully at every time it's come before us. There are many instances of stair, stairway that give access to the, the house on old topography. Consider Corinthian Island, for example, the staircase is going, going down. But when we're looking at how much, which public land should be treated to the, the private space, how much is necessary? So, in my mind, the amount that has been needed here on exhibit C to the left of the gate, rather defines, defines itself as the necessity of this, and our questions tonight have indicated that the space to the right of, to, including the gate and to the right of the gate, are something other than trash enclosures, and we have over and over declined to approve gates.
Is it, is it a, is it a material question for you because of the stone? If the whole thing are different material, would you think differently about it, or?
No, it's, it's the matter of enclosure. It's the matter of a permanent vertical enclosure. We look at things like garages, fences, walls, and retaining walls, vertical enclosures. And it's not that I dislike design, I like the design very much. It's just a matter of whether, whether we would be giving an unnecessary benefit disproportionate to other, to other going to give to Belvedere residents, and in this instance, an area, the area that is by all accounts, counts fairly, oh, so it's a particular concern, so.
I, I think if this were, were an open railing, I, I would prefer the stone. I don't, I don't think it's very attractive to see, see trash can.
Or the, you know, the railing would be on the other side.
The railing has nothing to do with the, to do with the trash can. The trash cans are enclosed.
Well, then, I, I still don't think, I, I think having, having one medium is, is preferable to make stone, and then whatever that gate is, and then steel, I don't, I don't know. I, I, like I said before, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's back into farther away from where the curb is anyway, and the one seems to feel the curb is a bit, and therefore, this is even further off the street than the curb, so.
Yeah, I sort of agree with you on the sense that if, if, if you're, if you're, I don't think it's our job to introduce a new media, a new, a new, a new material texture to the, to the, to the, to the plan, and I would, I would hesitate to do that. I think it's, it's either we, we sort of continue it or, or condition it on, on limiting that staircase in public, in the public right of way, and challenge, challenge the homeowner, the architect to, to have the staircase somehow recede behind the enclosure as opposed to become, the, come at the, or.
I agree with that.
Or with, with what Councilmember Cooper has said, is that it is the lesser of many evils, many evils.
And I think it is important that, I know, I was at the Planning Commission meetings where this was, where this was discussed sensibly, and the architect and owners really went, went beyond, I think was shocking how much they pulled back, they pulled back fill and created this huge difference, something that was going to be absolutely devastating to the streets of, streets of Belvedere, carry all this back and forth, whatever, whatever it was, thousand to three thousand or something. I mean, and I, I, they really have done an incredible job of listening to everything. I have to, have to, I understand that every license, license is a new license, and so maybe saying that this was already something that was there in nineteen, and I think you said two times already, but I do think that, I think that has validity. Obviously, several other planning commissions and several other city councils felt that this project and this area suited, suited the home that was going in there. I, for one, would not want to see the, the larger retaining wall, which is going to require more fill in there to move that staircase again. And, and I'm not sure you could even do it, as he said, that you could even get a stairway. Living on a long driveway, as I do, I realize that lugging all these things all the way around to the other side of the driveway is, it's not the greatest thing. So, having it right behind the garage, and then, not that I would want to do all those stairs, hopefully, these owners are young, but they'll be going up and down these stairs and getting their steps in as, as they carry on with living, with living. So, that's it for me.
Certainly, I, I don't know that moving the stair back behind the enclosure would, 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 would equal the fill as described in that exhibit that we saw a second ago, but it would be, would be, it would more to the site. Absolutely, absolutely, I would agree.
How many feet did you feel you, feel you could, were unnecessary to that?
So, from this image, this image that we have here, so the south side, side, which is to the left, as it is, I think we could get about three feet off. That's right, that's right, we're the, is right there. Right now, in our drawings, we're showing five container. So, if we went down to four contained containers, that's why I think we rid of three feet there.
But, but no scope to reduce the height at all?
It's just, it's, again, again, it's that retaining wall holds stair. We have, we have to get up somehow, and something's got to hold those stairs. And to your point, that means pushing it out towards the bay, which then adds fill.
Thank you.
So I can probably agree with, I think I can agree with council member Cooper that I think this has been, I don't like all the choices, but, 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 but I do believe that the choice of eliminating in this picture, the right-hand side works against a broader perspective that does exist, that we've been trying, that we've been trying against as well, which is disrupting a site, creating all the, all the fact in the city with the length of the project, the numbers of trucks coming in and out. And this would, and this would, a switchback system with, by my, more stairs on the property, which would need more retention, retention, much deeper grade in order to do so, do so. So I'm, I think I can agree with council member Cooper that this is, that this is the lesser of requirements or access at this, at this point of. All consent, do you have thoughts?
To what extent, the curb is, the fact that the curb, curb is sort of taking up as much as it, as it can, how far can that be pushed back? Again, I'm just, I'm just worried about the width of the road is my primary concern and the fact that we're enclosing such a large amount of public, public land.
So this is going back in time a little bit, but if I recall, working with the civil engineer, the placement, you, you want to create a curb, you don't want to create a small retaining wall, right? So the more you push it toward the house, if you will, the, the, you're now creating a whole new retaining wall instead of a curb, right? Because you've got a, on one side, let's say it's six inches, but the other side could be eighteen inches, which then requires a footing, then requires a whole grading that street. So I believe that civil engineer is placing it there for good reason. Now, with that said, Ed, can it be moved six inches? Can it be moved twelve inches towards the house? Potentially. I, I, I would have to confer with the, the civil on that.
Can I ask a question? Is, is there a planning approval? Can a revocable, revocable license be conditioned on, on the greatest effort to move the curb six to twelve inches inlet on the, inlet on the property?
Yes, we, we can condition revocable to this.
That, that, that seems to me, if that is possible, and if we were to, were to condition it on the, 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 the greatest of efforts to do so on the applicant's, applicant's part, is that a worthwhile trade, trade-off for, in your mind, for the retaining material as opposed to two materials perhaps, or the, the additional fill by turning the staircase inward onto the, onto the property? Granted, also with the three, two and a half to three feet of additional reduction in that left hand, left hand side.
I do, I do like the idea that the, the curb may be moved back even a few is. But we have no idea whether they can do that or not, so that's kind of a squishy condition. And, excuse me, and so, so it didn't sound earlier that the, the sighting of the curb was based on the topography. It sounded more like it was based on the existing parking spaces, that was my understanding. So it's unclear to me whether that's movable. But, but that would satisfy one of our concerns about the, the street. And even six inches makes a big difference, a big difference when parking a car or not, or not. But we have that data in front of us, I'll, I'll appreciate best efforts. I am very, I am very concerned about the size of this, of this, this wall that is, that is in public space. So I am, I've been on the planning commission nor city since 2006, and I cannot, cannot remember another instance where this city property has been absorbed into a revocable license. And therefore, for the fact that the actual stone wall encloses really takes away any use of public land is of particular concern. So getting back to what is really before us tonight, my understanding is that reviewing the code, we are to look at whether the revocable license area of the trash enclosure is in fact a trash enclosure and whether it's necessary, necessary to trash. And I don't, I, I wouldn't be able to, to have it tonight with regret, with regrets, because I like the property and appreciate the, the project and I appreciate, and I appreciate efforts that, that the applicant, applicant has, but I would, I would not be able to approve what's before us tonight.
Understand, thank you, thank you. I do see on, on the conditions plan that there's, there's, there's a detailed topographical play on this. And it does not, does not seem to be much topography going on between the current fence and the, the old edge of pavement, pavement, exactly right there. So, so I would feel comfortable if we do have the votes for this, conditioning it on, on moving the curb six to twelve inches as an offer perhaps to that. And, and if it's not possible, then the revocable license, for all intents and purposes, is null and void because they can achieve it and they would have to come back for a modification. If they can't achieve the condition, then, then they'd have to come back for, for a new license anyway.
Can I add one comment? I think it's really important to understand that, Sammy, if you mind going to exhibit A. This is really important. So you see the footprint to the house, so, and to your point, Ms. Cooper, we redesigned this house because we, because of the soil issue. The off-hall three thousand cubic yards of off-hall, when we redesigned the house, we, we lost five thousand square feet. And we had to, we had to post towards the street. So we, we, we got rid of five thousand square feet, inching the house closer to the street and raising it up three feet, that's how we were able to accommodate the condition of only having roughly forty cubic yard, cubic yards, how we were able to decrease that number, number. And it was a complete design. You can see by pushing the house towards the street, street, cramped, everything, everything that we had to do to street level for our garbage, everything got pushed, pushed up. So I just, I just wanted to make it clear that the, the reason, and all of those stairs and getting up to that, that height happened was because of a condition that was requested by the planning department. So I just want you guys to stand there, thank you.
Did that make sense, what I, what I mentioned about the, a condition? If, if, if a condition can't be met, they need to seek a new license anyway?
We would just hold off on the recordation of it until we saw a revised set of plans.
Is your proposal, does your proposal include reduction of the size of the enclosure?
Yeah, so I would propose that, that we condition a revocable license approval on moving the curb inward to the site, six to twelve inches in an attempt to widen and to preserve the full length of that street as much as possible, or as much of the street as, as possible. And to take the applicant's suggestion of reducing the size of that garbage enclosure from a, from a five enclosure bay to a four enclosure bay. And right now, I would propose that the switchback aspect of the stairs that is the longer stone wall, stone wall on the street is a condition that is, like I mentioned before, the lesser of other, other evil we've asked to move the site upward, site upward in fill, which made those stairs more of a challenge. Propose that as, so two conditions on the license, which would be one, we want the reduction of that south, south end of the five units to four units, two or three feet in the architect's, architect's S. And the downward motion, motion, the inward to the session of the stone curb from six to twelve to twelve inches as topography allows.
Does that mean twelve inches except where topography not allow? Because otherwise, we may as well just say, just say six inches, because it will be inches.
What would you like?
A foot.
Okay. Why don't we say, why don't we say twelve, twelve inches unless topography is feet, twelve inches where it is, where, where, where it can be topographically impossible, which does seem to be the case because there's not, let's just twelve inches. If they have, if they have a problem, they'll, they'll come back, they'll come back to us.
So your proposal is to approve the revocable license with the condition that the entire curb is moved twelve inches back in order to widen the street and a reduction of the size of the trash enclosure by three feet.
Sammy, if you could, if you, do you mind going, do you mind going to exhibit C real quick? So for all intents and purposes, the, the curb bump out, no, C, no, C, sorry, further down. For all intents and purposes, the curb bump out would be more, would be more same plane as the, as, 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 as the stone wall there. Okay. We have perhaps a motion for, motion for that? I can, I can clarify, I can clarify real quick. Motion is, is to approve the, the revocable license for 130th Avenue with, with three, two to three, two to three feet room on the garbage enclosure for four versus five and to relocate the stone curb, curb in sight to twelve inches.
I can second that. I, I do, having nev on the planning commission, but see these things coming, coming through, under whether there is scope to develop a more concrete policy around, around revocable licenses or whether that's already been done, because it just feels like these get bigger and bigger every time they, they come. And there's just more and more public land that's been taken. I don't know whether that work has been done in the past by the planning commission, I don't, I'm not sure.
We have a staff report and an item on a future agenda, which has been, has been kicked down the road to discuss revocable licenses and city council direction and, and, and perspective on, on many of these items.
With that, yes, I can second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you very much for your, for your cooperation and, and, and. Moving now to last item on our agenda, open forum, it's an opportunity for any to address the city council, any, any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. Anyone here to address the public, address the city council in public forum? Seeing nobody, Madam Clerk, anybody online?
I see none.
You see none, wonderful. Thank you very much. Well, now adjourn, adjourn tonight's meeting. Good night.